All right, good afternoon, everyone. We're past 5:30, so I'd like to welcome you to the Budget Committee meeting. This is a continuation of our meeting that we started last week. The committee decided to recess at that meeting, so we're gonna call this meeting back to order. Despite this being a continuation of a previous meeting, I'd still like to open with prayer. Sheriff Page would come up and lead us in a prayer, if you would bow your heads with the face.
Gracious and kind heaven be called, Lord. We thank you for all the mercy you have for it, Father. We thank you for watching over us, keeping us safe, Lord. Pray, Lord, for guidance tonight and understanding. Forgive us for sin and motivate you so many times. In your name I ask, your Lord. Amen.
Thank you, Sheriff. And Director Markham, if you would, let the minutes show that all five members are present here for me.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I think we all know why we're here. At the June 4 court meeting, the budget did fail by a vote of 12 to 2. So it has been sent back to committee for conversation. I think to say that we're having a difficult time reaching common ground on a budget that would pass, the full commission would be an understatement. So at the last meeting last week, Executive Robinson offered to speak to each individual commissioner and get their thoughts on the budget, what it's comprised of, and a property tax value that they would be satisfied, the things in the budget that they strongly advocate for, and things that they would prefer to have taken out. So to the best of my knowledge, Executive Robinson spoke with all 14 commissioners, or attempted to speak with all 14 commissioners. So the hope is out of this, we find some sort of common ground. So if you want to give, I know you don't want to delve into each individual conversation that you have, but we've got some wall of averages and some things you found in the middle that you might be able to give to us that'd be helpful.
Yeah, I promised every commissioner that the conversation with me stayed with me, so what I did is went through and just took an average of what where everybody was at. Now, obviously, there is no way, nobody's going to be 100% happy with this budget. I can already tell, there's no way to make that happen. But the general consensus was an 8% raise across the board to keep the longevity pay in at $100 per year and $50 for part-time per year, starting with year 5. Now, that was the, barely the consensus. There was just almost the same amount of people that wanted to lower that longevity. There was three different options thrown out. One was a 75-25 per year, another was a 60-30 per year, and then a 50-25 per year was also thrown out. But by one, the 150 did have the most support. EMA director, full-time, is not in the budget. Of course, I pulled my office assistant out, that wasn't even on the table. Four positions at EMS to add another truck for the day shifts. No other help there at EMS. Take out the two deputies for the sheriff's department. And I will say, since the sheriff's sitting there, this, there was nobody that did that, even mentioned that under any kind of ill will. It was like, they're not fully staffed now. If the pay raises and whatnot, get them fully staffed, then they would go back and revisit the two more positions. It wasn't, no, that's gone. Bang, bang, makes sense. Adding one mechanic to central maintenance. And I think that was basically the big questions that was on everybody's mind. I did send out the information that I had of what everything was gonna cost penny-wise to commissioners for them to look at beforehand. Then the big question, tax rates. The average tax rate that was, mine was $1.44 was the average. So I worked closely with Chad, or Director Markham, and we will have, we do have a budget at $1.44 to look at if that is something that the committee wants to dive into. That's pretty much my report, Mr. Chairman.
It does not include a full-time assistant for EMS, correct?
Correct.
That does include a parks and rec director that will be coming out of the restricted parks and rec funds, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Is that three patrol cars for the sheriff's department?
That is three cars. And I'm sorry, we're to think that is two cents also for the highway department.
Is that?
No, it's in, that is included in it.
That's under the $1.44?
Yes.
Is the EMA full-time and the $50,000 extra for the fire?
EMA is not full-time in this. The $50,000 for the fire, extra $50,000, is in there, and there is a raise for the part-time EMA director to help offset him administering them funds. Those funds do flow through EMA.
Is it 20, is it $25,000?
Yes.
Two, 20.
Yeah, the pay will be, total pay will be $25,000.
That's removing the two pennies from capital?
Yes. It would be 106 for general, 30, is it 35, 36? 36 for school, and 2 cents for highway department. That should equal $1.44.
And you said 8% raise?
8% raise. That's, okay, it's 8% raise across the board with some, a couple of corrections in there that y'all saw on Chad's 142 raise, which had some corrections. What that, also what that does is it brings convenience center workers up to 1050. I really, that was gonna be our bottom pace, that would be the bottom pace for everybody. Really want to try to get them to 12, but that brings them up to 1050, and a couple of the part-time play positions also brings that up to 1050.
Did that equalize the positions across the county, like janitors?
There's not.
All the same, so mechanics?
There is, there is adjustment for the mechanics. Yes, there is adjustment for the mechanics to bring them up to. I'll read that list, so y'all will be sitting with desks. I know I've got it in my papers. I do not have that in my papers.
Do you have a check?
Okay, yes, thank you.
You have some, these are the targeted salary adjustments that above, above 8%. It brings your mechanics up, your director at central maintenance, and a clerical position at central maintenance. Brings your maintenance supervisor for county buildings up, your library director, your assistant library director, some part-time libraries, some various, there's some various random adjustments within the sheriff's department and the jail to keep the gap proper. It's additional money, it was already asked for an EMA director in the highway department with, is in the, the two cents that go to the highway department will, that's really not, highway department's really not county general, so, but, so there's not even jumping into that, but that, two cents to go into highway department will take care of that. I guess the things, the important things that it doesn't cover is there's only one ambulance remount in that budget, which I'm not really particularly happy about. It doesn't, it doesn't take in the increase in parts and repairs for our vehicles. And I don't like taking that out of the budget because that is not something that we cannot fund, that we have to, I mean, it's gonna cost what it's gonna cost, but we didn't, no, I'm sorry, that is included, that is, I did include that. I started saying, why would I took that, I did, yeah, and the $50,000 for the highway department, for the fire and rescue. And there's several capital projects in there. I do have like library, flooring, some roof fix, some one-time expenses in there in county buildings. What is not is the two patrol deputies, the assistant for the sheriff's office, EMA full-time, and of course, my assistant, what I mentioned. I think that's pretty much got everything.
Any special adjustments to EMS above 8%?
No.
One time, we talked about the mechanics and central maintenance being divided into level one and level two with a, with a pay gap. Is this a level?
No, this, the split in that was going to be, if we could hire, we want to hire a, somebody like to do old changes and break jobs, that's not in, that position's not in this measure. It is, it is adding, adding a mechanic, but I guess in your scenario, that would be a level two mechanic.
Is this budgeting for deficit?
This budget does have a hundred, 210,000, and some change, 2010, 317, or something like that, deficit budget.
And doesn't include the TCRS COLA?
Does not. Again, I want to emphasize that after talking with everybody, I don't think there's anybody on my list in the notes that I took that is getting everything they wanted.
Let's go commissioners in the, in attendance first before this committee. I think we need to know your thoughts ahead of time before we pour a lot of work into everything you've heard.
I don't need no harm, I heard, but on this, when y'all talk, scoot your mics close to your mouth. I didn't hear half of what y'all said earlier right here on some of that stuff.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure it's on.
I don't think it's on.
It may not be, but I.
Maybe it wasn't close enough.
Did the audience here miss the executive with, there, okay, you want to do?
Yeah, I'll do another quick overview of that. After, after talking, I guess I should have brought it even closer, after talking, interviewing all 14 commissioners, went through and took basically an average of what everybody wanted and asked for, that being the big things being the 8% raise across the board, longevity for $100 a year for full-time, $50 a year for part-time, with a base wage of 1050 is what the convenience centers workers would be brought up to. There's some targeted salary adjustments in there for central maintenance, building maintenance, library director, you know, lots of librarians, sheriff in the jail, sheriff's department in the jail, some supervisor to keep the ratios the same. Yes, central maintenance. Am I hearing, I'm hearing myself through the thing back there, I'm sorry, that's messing me. Adds, adds four positions to EMS, adds one mechanic to central maintenance, adds two ambulance remounts, three, three patrol cars. Does not have an EMA director full-time, does not add two sheriff deputies, does not add a clerical or assistant to EMS, does not put anything in my office. And I think that was it. And, oh no, and the tax rate, the average tax rate was $1.44. So I put together a budget, working with Chad, on $1.44 to include this stuff, and it came out to about a $210,000 deficit budget.
And two, two pennies to the highway department?
Yes, two pennies to the highway department, thank you. Yeah, again, I'll say that was, is $106 pennies, $1.6 to county general, two pennies to highway department, and 36 pennies to the school system.
Was that, is that better?
Chad, what, you had told us before that when you're looking at those percentage for the salary increases, that we had a dollar amount, basically a penny per, how does that work per percentage?
Percent.
It's what?
It's about one, one penny per one percent.
So each percent, so like?
It's about $100,000.
If you went to 10%, then?
Then addition $200,000.
It'd go up to, it'd be a $1.46 instead of $1.44. Have we looked at where that, I keep going back to the work you guys did with the comparisons for the surrounding areas, and that three-step, that three-step scale that Chad developed. What, what does that look like? This, the 8%, where does it, how does it look in comparison to, to that? As far as, I guess, what I'm trying to see is how does that compare to where that salary scale that was developed?
The salary scale that was developed and presented would be just a higher over 15, so that'd be like seven, seven or seven and a half more pennies.
To get that whole thing?
To get that, to implement that, basically, yes.
And it was based on, it was based on an average, basically, from that, if I understood that correct?
Yeah, pretty much, yes.
So in other words, if we go, if we go 8%, we're still considerably below the average for our area?
Yeah, possibly, that's, because that's what that other was based off of, was averages from around us.
I would say one more thing than I should have. I think long-term, I keep going back to how we got here, and my fear is, I know I'm just speaking for myself, I don't, I don't intend to run again next term, so I know we're gonna have new commissioners, and I feel like when we do these, until we get to a point where we can do some kind of scale where there's something on paper, so that the guys coming into the sheriff's department, EMS, highway department, others, where they say, okay, and I keep using the school system for example, if, if you hired me as a teacher's aide at the school system, I know what, no matter what the school board does, I know what I'm gonna make next year. I know I'm gonna get a bump next year, and the next year, and the next year. And I know that that's what's coming. The uncertainty that I think that a lot of these guys feel is where, if we give them 8% now, and we turn over 10 commissioners, in their mind, they may not get another raise for 34 more years, because there's nothing there, there's nothing there to solidify that, and it leaves it open, and we wind up doing the same thing over and over again. And so I know where we're at, and I know that you had conversations with everybody, and I know where everybody's comfort label is and all that, I'm just trying to see if there's somewhere, how, how we could meld those two things so that we could give?
I had a, I spoke with Director Markham after the $1.57 had failed, and I made some adjustments to the tier as a suggestion. I didn't present it to anybody else, I brought it up at the last meeting, I made some cuts to the tier, lowered the, the spread on the increase in pay between the tiers, I lowered the first tier a little bit. Director Markham said that that would fall in the ballpark of $1.44, $1.45. And then we kind of left it at that at the last meeting for him to look at this.
And I think long-term, the solution, and I guess, Benny Wayne, you had the idea to get somebody to come in and do a study, a real study, and set classifications, employee classifications, where if you had, you know, a mechanic at central maintenance, there is this, whatever classification that is versus, you know, your patrol deputies at this classification, patrol sergeants at this classification, majors here, whatever, and get something set. Because the, that's what happens with the elected officials, so we don't, if it was up to us, what would happen is, is we'd get to a point where nobody would run for sheriff, nobody would run for executive, nobody would run for highway superintendent, because we'd never give them a raise. So those jobs are set from the state, and we don't have, we don't have an option. The state tells us what the executive is gonna make, what the sheriff's gonna make, what the highway superintendent's gonna make, and, and it's set, and so everybody knows that. And I, I think that needs to be the case with, with all of our folks. If you hire in as a patrol deputy, you know what you're gonna make next year, and the year after, and the year after, if you stay with it. And I'm not saying it needs to be way up here, I'm just saying, I wish we could come up with something where we could have, have that, where people knew, and when they looked at it, they're saying, okay, I know that this is what I've got to look forward to. Versus, you know, we're gonna have a county commission election in August of '26, and it's September, and then we do this, we do the budget next year, and you've got 14 people that, that are opposed to giving these raises, and then that goes on the next year, and the next year, and the next year. You're kind of at the mercy, I wouldn't want to live like that.
Any other thoughts from the commissioners?
I just need, do you have a printed-out version of the 1.44?
I don't know that.
I could look at?
Yeah, we, we do have that, if y'all want to hear, they're looking at, I wasn't gonna bother you with it unless y'all was in it really, would that, would that be helpful?
I would love to see that that's all around y'all as a committee.
Okay, let's do that.
waste management money, and that's been brought up over and over and over. Myself sitting on the solid waste committee, I was under the impression all this time that that money was gonna go back in to our county, not just convenience centers, not just, you know, making new equipment. And I understand that some of it had to this first round, I get that. But when you say you're thinking about doing off with the $5 that everyone's already paying on their electric bill and have been for 1800 years now, nobody blinks at that anywhere. I mean, that's just money in hand that we are, that you have. But the, the millions of dollars that you're gonna get from waste management over the next few years, to me, that can help offset so much of this, and I just don't understand, I guess, why, why we're not even thinking of putting that money back in the county. That's something that I, I have been bothered by. And I understand it's not something that happens overnight, because we're waiting for them to get the permit, we're waiting for them to do the sale. I understand that's not something that's gonna help in this year's budget. But when we're not even considering it to help down the road, that we can add it into the budget, that just blows my mind, I guess.
I'm not sure how to respond to me, until we start giving it, we can't budget it. So I don't know how to respond.
That'll be up to the budget committee that's here whenever the money comes in.
I think we're gonna, me personally, I think we're gonna have to use that next year. That's what, that's how we're gonna have to fund stuff next year, because we, if we pass any kind of property tax increase this year, there's no way we're gonna pass one next year. one next year. So I feel like we have to use that money to help fund next year. That's my opinion, if you're asking opinions.
Do we have any guidance on how close they are to permitting that, that next 800 to 1,000 cubic yards that they're, the sale that we were trying to permit, do we know how close they are?
We are hoping, we're hoping by the end of the calendar year.
Is there, is there a holdup? Is there that you're aware of?
Nothing, nothing other than the normal T-DAC permitting process.
So, would there be anybody such as maybe Senator Sherrill, or anybody that can have any pull to help with that, or is it just kinda in limbo, and nobody can help anyway?
I couldn't answer that, I don't, I don't...
Okay. I just thought that there might be somebody that might can help.
We, as a county, we couldn't get any help from state level, so I doubt seriously that they could.
On that capital project, what's your dollar amount, correct me?
Chad said it's $193. Chad said it's $193. I'm sure that, I'm sure that number's correct.
And I can't remember, what was this, was that a slight deficit or?
The one that you're hoping right now?
Yeah.
Two hundred, 210,000.
That's a 144.
It's a 144.
Chad, that longevity pay is gonna be paid out as a bonus in December, correct? Like, we treat it almost like an end-of-year bonus?
Yeah, I mean, we, we're not really, I guess that's kinda been in my mind, I don't know if you've had any further discussions on the exact time period of that, but yeah, it would be a one-time-a-year payment, and it seems to me that that would be a relatively good time to make that, so.
So on those hundred-dollar payments, how will that be taxed for the employees?
Depends on how they have their, what W-4 they have filed with us, and what, how they have their taxes set up.
It would just be normal income.
It would be taxed as normal, it's just an extra.
I mean, it's, it's ran with their normal, it's ran with their normal payroll check, just like any other bonus or supplemental pay is.
Do we have any idea how that's anticipated to grow as, as we go? Starts next year at 188,000 or so. We're gonna be quickly adding employees on as they hit that five-year mark, and then, do you have any projections on what that looks like down the road?
Yeah, we're probably looking at maybe 20, 25,000 a year.
Increase?
Yeah. Just rough numbers.
Benny Wayne or Chad, have y'all asked any of the employees, the county employees, would they rather have a lower longevity pay, longevity, and then have a bigger raise? Have you asked any of them?
I have not, no, I have not told the employees on longevity.
I've had a few speak to me personally that said if they have to choose between pay or longevity, they would rather have higher pay.
If there's any elected officials or department heads that would wanna touch on that, Sheriff Page or Director Kerr, I know you probably haven't had time to talk to every one of your employees, but if you think you have an idea of what that might look like, you're more than welcome to. Was that Director Kerr? Is Superintendent Sawyer here?
He's on vacation.
Okay.
He is watching the live feed, he may...
I really hate to miss anybody if you're, if you're here.
It, I mean, the thought process in, from, I guess back in the fall, when we started talking about the longevity, was to try to help retain people, and that was one of the things about, you know, that we looked at, and that's why we looked at longevity.
Director Markham, that was about 200,000, 180,000 for what we proposed?
154?
154, 1922.
Is that a hundred dollars per year to each employee?
Per years of service, so if they've been here 10 years, it'd be a thousand dollars. Then 11 years, the next year they'd get 1,100.
With a top out at 25 or 30, correct?
There was, there was no top out.
No.
Director Markham said in the last meeting.
Yeah. So that would be, what's it currently in the budget, it's 129,584, that's with benefits included, because that also, that also goes toward their TCRS credit as well. So that's a 15.57 benefit.
You're back to your 154 when you put in the stuff with it.
Okay.
It's gonna be shy of 2%, a little bit over 1.5%.
That, so it's 129,000, and a penny is 97,000, so you're about 1.25. I just want, I mean, obviously, it's the commission's prerogative there, I just wanna, that's the only method that we have of differentiating years of service to the county, is that longevity pay. So if we do away with that, then we're back to exactly where we, where we started anyways. And I know that was not the commission's intent, their beginning, that was not your beginning intent anyways.
Unless you have some kind of tiered pay scale.
The only problem I see with longevity pay is, it's gonna be an increasing debt.
We would hope that it would be an increasing debt.
Increasing debts.
That people are staying longer.
And that is going to have to be something that commissioners are gonna be willing to commit to funding down the road, you can't just, you know, you know, it can bound up fast the amount of it, and you can't just push that into your deficit every year. I mean, it's gonna take service and commitment to take care of that.
Did we ever get a rough number on dollar raise, slash, rather than percentage raise?
I've got some numbers that I've done, it's not in particular that...
I'll just, like we discussed, you know, eight percent is roughly $800,000, what does that look like?
That's about $4,000 per employee.
So real close to $2 an hour, really close.
Yes. And it would, I mean, and penny-wise would be the same.
Yeah.
Wouldn't change it.
I just, I keep on falling back to, you know, eight percent, those that are making 50, 60,000 get a very good raise compared to people making 35,000. You know, a $2 across-the-board raise is, is good, I mean, not amazing, or great, or, you know, singing to New York City about it, but that's an equal raise for all. That's, and that's just my thoughts on it. You know, if that's really close to $2, that's, everybody's life that works in this county would improve by roughly $4,000 a year. You know, not one at 8,000, one at 2,500, that's just sort of how I'm looking at it. And I don't even know if that's possible, but that's just thoughts.
Yeah, that's, that's very possible, but it's not a, when you're, when you're doing these, these raises, you just about gotta go back and forth, you can't just give steady, steady one-time raises or dollar amounts continuously, because then your gap between your people that are supervisors and workers shrinks. But if you continue to give percentage raises...
And it grows.
Then it grows, so you need to, you need to have a balance of doing one-time dollar amounts for a few years, then percentages.
While we've been, at least while I've been here, we've not done a dollar raise, it's always a percentage. While we've been here, to my recollection, you know, some is just thought, I mean, I know $4,000 isn't a fix-all or a solve-all, but to do it equally and fairly across all...
Well, like I say, that would be the same, same tax rates, it's, it's nothing that can't be done.
Right.
Hi Chad, on the very last page of the budget, $99,000, that three million dollar transfer out, remind me what that is?
Oh, that, that was a transfer out that we did to the Capital Projects Fund, to fund cash flow, and then also our portion of the match for the grant for the Health Department, all the ARP projects of the Health Department, and all of the waterline projects for the four utility districts, so all that money's in Capital Projects right now.
So according to this, building permits have pretty much, sales have doubled, and does that money go into a certain account, does it go in the general fund, where does that go?
General fund.
Me personally, Mr. Chairman, I would, I'll entertain the work off the $1.44, for sure. I'm basically looking at two pieces of paper with the general idea, it's vague, not saying that you're trying to be vague, but it's just a working piece of paper. I would like to see the big spreadsheet of every employee, and what eight percent looks like, like we started out with, for the eight percent, and then even Dakota's suggestion of the flat raise, what that would look like across the board, like per hour versus what they're being paid now, or however that, I mean, I would like to look at both of those to work, potentially work off of both of them to have a better idea myself, of what it looks like, current pay versus new pay, and what that looks like.
So you worked on the spreadsheet, and I think I heard Chad say that that would have yielded us right around the same area, 144, 145, right? Is everything else comparable in the budget? I mean, I mean, if, if the two land us in the same plate, and everything else is the same, then the pay raises cost us effectively the same amount, right? Do you have that, did you ever put anything together off the work he did on the scale? Sorry, Chad, yeah, Chad, sorry.
So I did, my only concern, and I shared that with Commissioner Hutchings, is that making some of those adjustments that lowered the pay actually would require us to have several employees and positions that would either receive less than a 1% raise, or no raise at all, to put them into those, to those categories. And so I think it was 26 positions that would see no raise, and we would, some of them it would take a little while to catch up, and then several of them were below 1% raise, just by knocking down those percent, by knocking down some of those tiers, like we did. So that would be my only concern, I do have that in a spreadsheet that I did, so.
See, I would be interested in a set pay plan myself, where each year you know you're guaranteed a 1% raise, or a 2%, you know, whatever, and then if there's years that it's good, maybe you could do a bonus, or adjust the raise, or something, but if they know each year they're, you know, going towards something, and I mean, that's the way I am at work, I mean, we know that, you know, each, even if it's a percent, just 1%, we know we're gonna get something at the end of the, you know, added when our fiscal year starts. But, you know, the problem is, you know, I, I know that the general, average median for one county, average general household median pay is around 27 to 30,000. So, you know, with the way everything is right now, you know, knowing that you're gonna get a little more each year, a lot of times, that's... get a little more each year, a lot of times that's more reassurance than, than they have.
I, I completely agree. I think you run into the same issue that you brought up with longevity about you then have to fund that year after year.
Yes.
And so it's, it's kind of the same situation there.
Same situation.
This might compare pretty closely to that, Chad, Budget Committee. So that pay scale, and I'm going off blind memory, like let's say we had a deputy that started at, at 20 bucks an hour. You know, at year number five, do they, they go to 21 if there's a dollar increment or something like that. So the COLA raises that the county gives, that over that five years anyway, it's gonna put them, if we go off times past, it's gonna put them above that anyways. Because I mean, if you get 2%, a 3%, a 2%, a 4%, you're already above $21. So would they still get an additional dollar? Or is it just, this is what you started at and in five years you get a dollar raise? Good luck.
The, the way I understand it or interpret it is, these are the set numbers now. If there's a COLA given, then all of those numbers will shift every time a raise is given.
It's based on, based on levels and each year is a level.
So if there's a 5% pay increase in 26, then...
Whatever set for that level goes up 5%.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if we have the waste management money coming in, then we could use that towards this.
Next year.
I understand that.
If we can get sales tax passed, we can have 10 more pennies that can possibly come off of this.
Chad, we had spoke one time about if a percentage raise happened, it only applying to current employees. So like we started, and I'm not saying this is the way to do this at all, y'all, it's just thoughts. If everyone's salary right now starts year zero and we adjusted everybody that's a current employee, I'm not saying that's in place of longevity or anything, these are just work following. But if that was now year zero and we started there, so that way everyone sitting here and everyone that's not here, they identify from it because they've been employed, because we've always raised the base salary with every percentage, right? I know that doesn't help bringing in you folks, you know, graduating school, sending them out, I know that. But that would be a somewhat reward of like a, hey, we appreciate y'all. If somebody, if you've been here three years and somebody starts tomorrow, you're guaranteed to make more than even for her. Just rough thoughts, and I'm not saying that's right or wrong, it's just thoughts. Someone just sent me some information that said that the median household income in 2023 for White County, Tennessee is now $52,204, or $206, I'm sorry. That's exactly what it is.
It was, it was 48 to 20, 2022.
Yeah, it was 48 to 20, so now it is, that is out of the American Business Journal. That's what I'm saying. Good. I'm not saying that they're in this room, I'm saying this room. I think the 144 is a great, great place to start and I appreciate the work and the time and I told Denny Wayne on the phone that I appreciate what you did. Something that has been in the budget this whole entire time.
Commissioner, we can't hardly hear you.
I'd like to ask the audience to keep it down, we're having trouble hearing up here.
Go ahead.
It's been in the budget this entire time as the new EMS crew. I think that is excellent that it's been in there this whole entire time. I think that is needed at the utmost for the community, especially after eyewitness events and all the things that's happened here recently. I think 144 is a great place to start and I don't know, you know, what can be worked, but I think the amount of time and I mean, the real numbers, I mean, if anyone is called, which I want people to call, and there's an educational standpoint, like where's my money going? Like you could literally say EMS crew, mechanic, pay raises, safety, public safety. You know, we could go down the check box, you know, this, 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 and this, and this. I think 144 is a great place to, to start and to look at and I don't know what that looks like. I don't know if it's changing longevity or to adjust the raise, but just my two cents. I think, I think a whole lot of work's went into this and I think it's valuable work that's been done.
Okay, I don't see if we could go much lower than the $144 and take care of our county employees and EMS and Sheriff's Department. You know, we've got an obligation to our taxpayer, but we've definitely got an obligation to this county to make sure it runs well too, so.
I don't think...
We're gonna have to dig in and be responsible.
I agree, there's, I think we might can haggle on a few numbers, but I wanna look at the spreadsheet. I don't think eight percent is gonna get EMS where they need to be. I think they're need to be pulled out separate from, like the Sheriff's Department and, and reevaluated individually and made, I mean, and to do that's either gonna cost more pennies or we're gonna have to make other adjustments and other cuts in other places. But I think we don't have them in the eight, in the targeted above eight percent portion and I think we need to consider that. But I wanna see the whole spreadsheet of everything like we had previously to discuss that myself.
How much money is in that targeting salary adjustment pool roughly?
We figured that, I don't think I wrote it down.
I'm thinking it was, it was 60 to 80,000.
Thank you.
Chad, did we end fiscal year under 80 on our general fund roughly?
As far as fund balance, we're still working on, yeah, we're still working on closing that out. Just to give you...
No, it's fresh.
Yeah, let me look at something right quick.
They hot off the press.
As far as cash on hand, it's just a little bit over eight, but we'll have several payables that we have to do that'll pull that fund balance down. But as far as cash on hand or cash with trustee, it's a little over eight.
So we budgeted a $532,000 loss, correct? In fiscal year '25? Is that right?
Yes.
Yes.
But we've out, we've outpaced that. That's not the deficit we're gonna see.
No, we don't anticipate that being the deficit we're gonna see. But like I said, you know, I, the cash on hand amount that I gave Commissioner Rogers isn't necessarily gonna be our ending fund balance number, but, you know, I mean, we're not gonna be that far into, into our fund balance.
There's a trend, we end the year better than we typically budget more, correct? Would the committee entertain an 11% raise for the employees? That's pulling 1.6% from the longevity and 1.4% added to the deficit, bringing the total deficit to 350,000.
Does it weigh longevity?
Yeah, that would be the, that would be 1.6%.
They're talking about adding, adding that to deficit?
Yeah, I think in lieu of everything Commissioner Golden referenced with the waste management money that we expect this calendar year and then a historical reference point of doing better than ending the year better in RO than, you know, R than what we budget for, I would be comfortable with a $350,000 deficit.
The feedback that I've been receiving is emergency service, targeted emergency services.
You can still take the, and still take the spreadsheet at 11 unless evaluate.
I would be more out to 8% and then adjust and then shift.
Specifically to emergency services, correct? So we have 200, around 225 full-time county employees?
Two, uh, 200.
200. How many of those would qualify as, I mean, the term emergency services is a blanket term, right? So does that include every sheriff's department? Is that the jailers? Is that everybody or is that, are we just referring to road deputies? How do we?
I mean, I'm referring to EMS, EMA and sheriff's department.
Is that all sheriff's department employees?
Cause you get, if you don't do for, if you do for the, the road deputies or that side and you don't do it for the jail side, then there's a, then you're out of balance.
So how many employees, how many employees is that total?
So you're including the jail too?
Yes.
Your total, do you know your total employees for the whole department? Nate?
So I, if Mike, you still... We're over half.
Do you know how many employees you have total right now? So we're over half, right? So the first...
You're three quarters, just about.
Yeah.
We're, we're ship short.
Yeah, and then Mike, I think you're, you're short right now also, right?
I think the reason both departments are so short is because of pay.
So most of your percentage are off your raises going to these departments already? As I think if Chad, I think it would be very easy for him to break that down, the percentage that goes directly to emergency services and then the other departments. So you're, you're requesting a spreadsheet with eight percent as a reference point and see where that lands, emergency services, and then we have money, we, we shift from there?
I mean, I would, I don't think Dakota has a bad idea with the, and Denny Wayne has mentioned too, the flat dollar amount raise and then potentially adjust off of that either.
I think you do, and Denny Wayne referenced it, I think you do the dollar amount if you're comfortable with the spreads and the gaps between administration and their direct reports. So I think we look at that first and if we are, and he, he referenced it perfect, you go, you stagger, you know, you, you do a couple of years of a percentage and a couple of years of dollar amount. But I think we look and make sure we're comfortable with all the spreads and then a dollar amount would be, would be a great way to look at it.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, he threw out $4,000 was eight percent, right?
Equivalent.
Equivalent to eight percent. So I mean, if, when you look at dollar, I think it goes back to the same thing that we're talking about right now, is you, you take non-emergency people and maybe their raise is, I don't know, 3,000 and then emergency services is four or, or there's still a way to adjust those numbers too. And I think, I mean, percentages and dollars is, it's kinda in the same realm.
Among the committee, the pay scale is the last piece that we need to litigate out. Is that fair to say? All the other bullet points that the executive laid out, there's not gonna be much debate here. Is that right?
I would like to see the EMA full-time.
I'd like to see the EMA full-time.
That's the only other one that's in here that's not.
I mean, this is, this is a position that will pay for itself and over, and, and then some. And I don't, I don't know why it's just being discounted like that, but I, I really think it's something we need to look into. There's a lot of grant money we have missed out on because we did not have a full-time EMA director and I can only imagine, I know Matt was, as he said, yeah, you had the call the other day, but just having him being able to respond to emergencies in the county at, at a moment's notice is pretty nice. And I, I think that's something we need to really consider.
Okay, so is that issue enough to kill this budgeting committee? Cause then we'll have, we'll have two items that we need input from the rest of the commission.
Yeah, for me.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. So you're asking the, will the full-time EMA not being in there cause me...
Kill the budget in, in committee to begin with?
I think that is a very important position. It is needed. The grants stuff has been mentioned. I'm more concerned about the line of communication between FEMA and FEMA, but I would not sacrifice the entire budget over that position, even though I'm strongly in favor of it.
What was your consensus from, what was your poll for and against the full-time EMA director who took the poll?
One, one difference. And then I had a, a couple that I think may have later, I was gonna say changed their reply, but was like, put some conditions on it if, if we go that way about the hiring process and how we fill that role. So with that being said, it almost went back to where that, the majority did support that with some contingencies on it.
Sure.
I, I mean, I skipped the $144. We funded a full ambulance and a remount out of the budget for this last year, Alex last year. We originally had planned for two remounts and one new ambulance. We funded, like I said, the new ambulance and one remount, so that left one remount for this year to consider and the $144 has, has two remounts in it. I mean, I understand we need to continue to do that, but if we can, if we pull one of those out, that's $210,000 that we can haggle with other things and keep the $144 if we receive or, or a deficit. I mean, if we could, I mean, that could be, if we considered EMA and it's another $50,000 deficit or over, and just, there's some haggling I think that can be done to still keep the $144 or, or $143 in that, in that range and, and have that full-time position in there to keep that split or keep the $144.
The pay in the EMA, EMA, OEM, that's our two hangups in committee, right? Not a lot of shifting. Not a lot of shifting will be done to change the tax rate, though. Well, when, when we're looking at pay, it's gonna be still within that 1.44 range. We're gonna be working with money that's already allocated, correct? And the EMA, we anticipate either adding to deficit or it's gonna be a minimal, a half a penny increase, right?
I'm gonna say that 1.44, I'm, I'm not on board with the pay of, of 8 or 11% until we look at this and see it. I think that number could go up because I, I don't wanna discount these guys anymore. I am, I'm not, you, we, we see other departments hiring and things. These guys, we're not trying to cheap out on our employees. I'm not, I'm not gonna do that. I, I understand that, that everybody's concerned and I understand that there's households that are having trouble and I get that. But we also have employees we have to pay and we have to pay them market value or they will leave. And I, I feel very confident in the fact that these guys do a good job. And I don't wanna just, I, I'm not looking at just an 8 or 11. I wanna see where we are after those, with those numbers and see where we're at. I could say that we may need to go higher.
I was moving to the rest of the commission to let you guys, if it's, we're down to five other commissioners left. There's only nine of us here tonight total. We could barely pass a budget among ourselves right now if we were all in congru.
I, I do wanna say, if you don't mind, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Back, back to the EMA position, you know, I would, I don't wanna sacrifice the whole budget over that. I mean, we've gotta get a budget passed and we can come back next month and look at that when needed. But I do wanna emphasize that the issues that we had the other day were so busy. I'm sorry, the issues that we had the other day where we were so busy, and I'm sure Matt will be able to talk about it if, if, if we need him to. The first people through the door of the fire to rescue those people were a member of the Doyle Fire Department and a, and our EMA director. That's who was there. That's, that's what we get with a, with a full-time EMA director. Somebody that can respond and does no watch to. And somebody, somebody, that's what we get, somebody that can respond.
Do you guys, could you hear? Can you bring him?
The, the, the fire that we had the other day, the first two people that went through the door were a Doyle, member of the Doyle Volunteer Fire Department and our EMA director. That was the two that went in.
Is that correct or is that false information?
I'm sorry, what?
I thought the CD employees was the first ones there.
Amen.
The CD, the CD helped get, you're right, there's the city police.
That's, that's what I'm getting.
But the fireman that went into the, the house, wait, I'm sure the first ones that was packed up through the door.
I'll, I'll bring you on.
Right, but, but John was there too. So John was there pretty quick and John's, John's.
And I'm not, I'm not trying to knock you right there, but I'm just saying.
Denny Wayne, the fireman through the door with those two, the city police and I think the city street worker. I think there was a city street worker that was out there, just up in a city police officer, uh, bored and then I understand John was there very fast. He was the first one with the sheriff's department. John was the first one with the sheriff's department on the second floor.
Thank you, Matt.
Yes.
Is this an EMA conversation or is it a, is it a fire protection conversation? I mean, is this a can?
A city fire.
This is a city.
A city.
Well, this one fire was in the city, right? But this, this entire conversation.
What I'm looking at is an EMA director that works for the county can respond anywhere in the county when needed. And that's, that's what I'm looking at. A part-time one can do it part-time. A, a full-time can do it full-time. And that's, that's the difference that I'm looking at. And you are EMT also, is that right?
Yes.
That would be a, a something that I was gonna say is that there are some contingencies to that position. And I think the, one of them needs to be that they are an advanced emergency technician as well. But that's something I think, having somebody that can respond whenever, if I was to understand that there was, uh, two of the children were carried into, because there wasn't an ambulance at the time, they were being.
They were all, they were out, right, Mike? We all, we all, we were all around. There was a city officer there.
Yes, sir.
There was a city officer there. There was three kids, took the officer by my dogs. There you go. And then there was a man that laid on the ground, burst for about 30 minutes waiting for aid.
Thank you.
I may have opened the can of worms, I apologize.
No, no, it's.
I'll, I'll answer your question. I had Susie pull the cabin board because I probably.
Come, come on up. Sorry.
So, I, I, my name's Matt McBride, I've spoken. Do you care about that, right?
No.
So, my name's Matt McBride, I am the emergency management director that is, is talking about. So, to, to McCoy, I'm glad you're here so you can answer that question. And John Meadows, we said, one of the projects I lost my hair. In this county, it is a collaboration of all emergency services, whether it is the city or the county. It takes assault. So to hear the public and the commission ask questions, me and Mike have worked together, me and Simmons, everybody on this whole side of the room in some form has either been in a training or, I'm sorry, we, on this side of the room too. William works for EMS, I made interior tax with him. I watched Chief Sparks too, somebody during the day when I'm in my capacity as emergency management director, I can count countless times when rescue, which their chief brought up, has no one to respond and I go and get rescue one when there's no traffic to get a rescue in at that. We all work together. Nobody's getting a pat on the back. Since I've seen city police cover, SO, SO cover city police since 1995 to 1996 in this county. With that being said, our emergency management situation has grown. Not only is it grown, EMS. Mike, y'all are up to 7,000? Nate?
I'm sheriff.
How many?
23,000.
23,000, okay. In.
24 now.
This month alone, there was, I'm sorry, in that day, there was 28 call out for fire rescue, 72 for sheriff and 27 for EMS. With three daytime ambulances, one 24/7 career person on shift at the city with an eight-hour person across town. They were already out on a call, a medical call with EMS. And the sheriff answered 72 calls per service. I'm, I'm not sure on city police, so I apologize for them. I do want, I do not wanna speak out of place, but per 911, 27, they also, they're 27, I think.
And that day shift crew from the sheriff's office had three patrol deputies there?
Yeah, so day shift, I didn't, I didn't know that. I just, I got Susie to pull this because I was afraid these questions would come, so our 911 director was nice enough to pull this. This is the cad incident. So that's what we kinda look at for our records and ask personal information and address and such. But, but she did was nice enough to pull that. That being said, City of Spark was attacking a fire. You know, they had one person on. They have helped us in the county multiple times. We try out to assist them. We're all one team, even though we all have different uniforms on. If we couldn't, and if we didn't do that, we wouldn't survive, none of us. Would you guys not agree? Would you ladies and gentlemen not agree? Right? When the jail has an incident, they don't just call NSO. I've been over there before for a medical call before when they've had an incident inside the jail and there's city police, there's THP, there's county sheriff there. And I don't even know who half the time people are sometimes that's there to assist them. So, we don't just see one even though we wear different uniforms. Now, we have put sheriff's deputies on fire engines multiple times. We have put EMS people on fire engines on the pump panel with no training and tell them that all both two gauges to watch the needle and if one falls too down too late, Chief Brunton that's sitting up here, which is also a commissioner, will vouch for that. We have multiple years tried to combine services because at one time, I can remember each department having 30, 35 people to put somebody in, in a department or on a fire truck. People used to farm, they used to work around the house, they used to log, their volunteers was two minutes from the station. I'm gonna give you a little piece of advice. In the early 80s at Centralview, they kept, which is the place that I'm the fire chief at, when it was started, all the way up until almost the mid 90s, there was a wood fire that stayed burning in the station year-round during the wintertime, morning and night. That takes dedication. We don't have those volunteers and they used to cut the firewood and they used to haul it down there. And our chimney still stands there. Now we heat with gas because we don't have that dedication. Now let that sink in just a little bit. That being said, and people that's in the fire service and Mike, I know I spoke many times about, and, and Nate and the sheriff spoke many times about the cost of our equipment. The $50,000 that I asked him, who was fortunate enough to get last year, with the $50,000 increase this year, which puts that line item that runs through emergency management as an oversight that runs through PO system, through the county finance office, that $5,000 will put somebody in a coat, a pair of pants, a boot, helmet, hood, and gloves. That's it. One person. I would say combined last year between the fire departments roughly, and I don't have those numbers in front of me and I apologize, just what the county, individual departments, north and everybody, Bondicraw, Castle, Eastland, Malt, Doyle, Centralview, Hickory Valley, everybody within the last two years has, has received a state, state, or Tennessee State Fire Marshal's grant. I don't think we have a department yet, it's not. Cherry Creek received one too. Without that being said, I mean, I don't know what we could do. That's bought gear, a washer and dryer, hose dryer for us, the cancer initiative. We have to abide by those same rules as the career department. We follow under that same rule as for the, 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 yeah. But to hear us and talk about fires, we have several fires. I think within the last year and a half timeframe, there's been four fire fatalities in this county. I've never known us to have that many in that short a period of time since that. We've had five, I apologize. So we have somebody here from that works, also works for the State Fire Marshal's office, the volunteers. So we've had five in the last year and a half timeframe, five. I don't know if Black County has ever, in the history that I know of, anybody else that we've ever had anything in that timeframe, that many. Chief Brunton, do you, can you take? Five fa, fire fatalities. So, we do have, and I'm sure you probably, you were all probably watching social media faster there than I am as far as the update on yesterday's fire. It's a very unfortunate event. It does take a toll, it takes a toll on everybody, it takes a toll on law enforcement. Officer McCoy said, his people, the city worker that helped put those children in a cop car, they were burn victims. The father that laid out in the yard. We had to put the fire out yesterday, or I'm sorry, Monday, with someone laying face down in the yard, trying to get burn sheets on him. And the paramedic that was in charge of that, the patient was sitting in this room as we were still fighting fire because the neighbor's house was threatened. Now that could happen in Centralview, Cherry Creek, Bondicraw, Eastland. I'm not speaking for any department, I'm not speaking for Centralview. It could happen tonight, or it could happen tomorrow. Our fire district is the largest in the county. It goes all the way from basically VASF over to the edge of Doyle and then all the way down to Castle of the County line. Most of your volunteer fire departments are running over 600 calls a year now. As far as their call, like five to 600, some of them are emergency medical. But just like we said on yesterday's fire, all your, all your ambulances are out. Mike and him are strapped for help. We try to assist them. We try to assist anybody that needs it, same way with them. I know if Mike had an ambulance available or I needed them to come help us do anything, our scene, that would be there to help us, so would NSO. I mean, Simmons and those guys, Nate and police, all of them. I mean, we have tried to deploy hoes and deploy hoes and, and I don't, I, I can't even name the task that we have completed as a group. So, I'll give you an example. That night, blanked you, leave out. Was it Monday night we had to go for the individual or Sunday night? Chief Steele, was that Monday or Sunday you went out and drove? Saturday night? I'm sorry, so past Saturday night, we were out for a drone looking for an individual that was lost in the woods. You know, if we went up, I mean, I, you can ask, I don't know if the two officers are in here, but I, I put on their actual bulletproof vest and went in the woods with them. We didn't know, we just could hear somebody calling up for help at 1:00 in the morning with a drone oversight of us. Now, I didn't feel threatened at all. I didn't feel like I was in any harm's way because I had two good officers with me. But that's what we do. Once again, they were out handling other calls. So that's just some small things that this group does. I don't think we've sat in a room or a meeting, a budget meeting, that I know of, well, and correct me if I'm wrong, that there's not been some set of tones or a radio go off that somebody's not had to get up and go leave for this room. I don't think there's been beaten yet. So that's how often it happens here in, in this Black County with 30,000 people. Does anybody have any questions as far as?
Matt, why you rubber.
I can answer the fire and rescue and emergency management, but Mike's here and, and thank the sheriff's here for that.
Why, why you rubber upgrade is on that 32 text messages? What is your job, your job description? An EMA director, what is your job description?
We have a job description that I'm here. To my knowledge, the county executive has a job description. My job description is to be a liaison during storm damage. And then we had storm preparedness, hazardous mitigation, our FEMA flood plan stuff. That's kind of a dual role purpose because it has to include the county executive's office and myself and, and also Jerry Sarder back there, actually dealing with an issue right now that's been ongoing for two or three years. Dealing with an issue also at Bentley subdivision. Outside of that, there's the fire coordinator position. There was some fraudulent spending or misappropriation of funds two or three years ago within fire organization and association. Ms. Davis was here for a lot of that, in the amount of around 60 to 70,000 dollars. So, with that being said, in that fire coordinator position, it doesn't have necessarily a leadership role outside of my department. I mean, we are just recently dealing with an incident that has some legal action that's gonna have to take in, nothing necessarily towards us, but some requests for information. I got one of those letters, the rescue squad got one of those letters. And there'll be other agencies that get that, that'll run through me and then run through county legal. Is that right, Mike? So, outside of that, we spin up all of our ELC activations, which is all of our emergency operations centers during storm time, any mass casualty incident. Anything that has to do with team or FEMA funding would, would be directed through me, any reimbursements for Jerry. Brush, as far as debris cleanup, we measure those brush piles once we reach a threshold limit. And I'll be glad to sit down with anybody. And Director Mark, I mean, you've been through that process in the 2020 storms with all of our debris cleanup. And at that time, we didn't have, we didn't necessarily have me in that position and all that setup. But basically through FEMA reimbursement or team reimbursement, we have a mass casualty incident or a disaster situation, that's where that funding comes. Some of your cybersecurity money now that comes down through the pipeline comes through there. Homeland security, that's part of my job description. We have to meet with homeland security. We've missed out on a couple of those meetings, I'll be honest with you. And that's cost us that, Chief Brunton, that actually cost us a, a lot of generator tower, but we ended up having one of those come back around. But Nate, multiple times.
Homeland security grants, I can't.
Yeah, they can't, they can't apply for them. That has to come through my office and they can't attend the meetings. I know there's been some money that's passed down through different organizations for that. There's been IFAT kits and so forth. And like I said, we have missed out on some of those things. Your LEPC meetings, your local emergency planning committee. I know the EMPG, Ms. Becky, you brought up the EMPG programs last, last meeting. Some of those are requirements for us to receive that funding. So, there's other things. And then I think, I think, and you can back me up on this, Mayor, I think the consensus was is you, you wanted me to respond if I'm available during the day, if I'm in office or if I'm working or whatever, out roaming in the county. working or whatever, out roaming in the county. It kind of blossomed into something. I think, you know, rescue squads welcomed me to, I think I just about have codes to most of the fire departments and have been told if, you know, or a way in, can call somebody in an incident if I'm close to respond to truck, to that incident if I happen to be working or available. So.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's right. These are the people that are in my district and want me to ask questions, right?
Yes, sir.
And I'm against you or nothing, right, Terry?
No, and I'm glad to. I got 24 seconds.
I got one more question and then we'll get back to you, right, Terry? So in my area is the calls that you've had this year at EMA, you had 200 calls, almost right at 200 calls.
Yes, sir.
Was them EMA calls or was them calls that the department heads of each department could have took care of as rescue, fire, EMS could have took care of and you not responded to them or you could have been a full-time and been in the office writing grants?
Say that, I mean, I'm sorry to say that one more time.
So the calls that you went on to, the 200 calls that you went on?
Yes, sir.
Were they, were they EMA calls or were they other calls that, because you and Danny Wayne signed the contract that you could run everywhere in the county, they're all the calls?
Right. I see what you're saying. So we didn't, we didn't, we didn't sign them. We didn't sign a contract.
But I told you to, to respond to anything that you could and that when arrived, when you arrived on the scene, the incident command, whoever was in charge, if they did not need you, they could send you back, but you were there for any resources that would be needed for any.
So on the dispatch protocol, what I did is when I was hired, we didn't necessarily have a dispatch call. So basically what I did is I went and visited Cumberland County, put, I talked to Charlie Parker, the other emergency management directors, and we went, I kind of went based off, well, I took bits and pieces of each one, I'll just be honest with you. No tour, just a lot. So to answer your question, Commissioner Branton, yes, some of those are callouts for structured fires, hazmats, I mean, they are calls that sure could have probably been taken by maybe or handled by someone else, but I would like to think that I've also been of an assistance, I guess, to that, I guess, when I was called. But yes, I did pull that. Anything plane incidents that involves federal agencies or anything that involves a federal agency or even sometimes on major state agencies, I know that I work very closely with the State Fire Marshal's Office and TBI, there's a fire investigation and so forth. So there's, I don't know, I mean, there's multiple ones that probably to answer your question, yes, but I would like to think that I was an asset there instead of being other handlers. And there's several in the room. I don't think that I would like, I don't think that I've necessarily ever been a handler to that, so. So I've always tried to do what people's asked me to do.
Mayor?
Yes, Mayor.
What happened to the building that you were supposed to get for us through grants?
So we didn't hardly move fast enough on that and so basically what happened is through some state health cuts, since we weren't moved, so they lost several thousands of dollars if it wasn't basically invoiced on numerous items and we weren't the only county, there was multiples, is basically the way it was explained to me. And that's about the detail that I have with, I mean, HVAC units all the way down to generators. It just buried across the state of Tennessee. Some things were for health departments that some of that money was supposed to be bought for Ms. Davis and they didn't get it either because they weren't invoiced. That's enough. Yes, Mayor?
Matt, let's hold off on questions from the audience.
Yes, sir.
And the group of commissioners though, any, any other, any other questions for Matt?
Commissioner Branton, your line of questioning to him or do you feel like him as a trained employee on call for the county being paid should not respond to those calls?
So I have no problem with responding to any call right there, but it needs a call, it needs to respond as 300, not 1100. That's the only thing I have a problem with right there.
I don't know what that means.
And I understand you, right, Terry? But I'm just saying, right, Terry, a lot of calls that he's went on to, right, Terry, some of them could have been handled by Jason, uh, Jason Sparks at Doyle, you know, or Rescue, they could have been handled instead of going in route because the EMA vehicle wasted county people.
Would the people that are waiting for help say it's waste to have a trained individual come in?
What about the county, the county liability to have a paid employee that sits in the office that has the ability to respond?
And doesn't.
And doesn't, I don't, maybe I'm misunderstanding your question. I don't know the code, the 300, the 1100, I don't know what that, that means. If you'll explain it, maybe that'll help me understand.
It's two separate numbers, Commissioner Hutchins, 300 is a fire number, 1100 is a number that I adopted to emergency management that's been in place for years. I couldn't tell you how. So it was Ford, my dollars, Ford, Jim Savage, I think, I think Cole was actually a 1100 number.
But I still don't.
It's two call out.
Okay, so.
I'm still the same person.
Is one of them, you're the boss in charge and everybody has to talk to you and the other, I don't understand the codes and the lingo.
300 is the chief of Central View Fire Department, 1100 is the event. That's the difference.
Same person.
So I do have a question.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
It's, okay, so if you're thinking about putting this back in, and I'm going to be honest, I'm one of the ones that has a, I'm not going to say a contingency or whatever, but I do not think the pay should be the same as our EMS director of their, that range. But is this going to take away money from the EMS and raises to put this back in there? I mean, is, is, in order to do an EMA director, are you going to take money away from EMS? No?
I don't intend to with any of the numbers that I'm working off of. I don't intend to.
It's one thing.
What I would anticipate is either the property tax number will have to go up, you know, and we can, we can go out four decimal points, so that could go four, four, five, or we have to add to the deficit.
I get that, but Lisa, it's July, we don't have a budget and I know we want to run through scenarios here and scenarios there, I mean, and that's great. I think we should run through some scenarios, but I just don't feel like we have time to run through every single scenario to satisfy every single person. I think, you know, and we're not on budget, but we're here, you know, we're here to support and we're here to throw out ideas, but you know, guys need to make some decisions.
I agree. I think where I was, where I was going is trying to get the items of debate, we know we've narrowed it down to pay and now I've added EMA back to an item that we'll have to adjudicate. So the, what I was trying to get, if those are the only two moving pieces I was trying to get from the rest of the commission, are we comfortable enough for the budget committee to work on only those two pieces as a moving target? If there's other things in there that are concerned or if EMA or the pay is a, is a single issue item that would kill the budget, I just think we should know, logistically, we have one scheduled meeting on July 7th, that's next Monday. Outside of any special call meetings, that is the last committee meeting we have before we would vote on this on July 21st. I do not want to fail another budget in full court. If the 144 range is too high for commissioners, I think we need to know it now, last week, so we can continue to make adjustments. And that's all I'm trying to do is get to the last items of debate. If we're shifting pay around and we're talking about EMA director and we're in the 144 range, we need to know if there's enough votes there. Okay, so I think what we want to do is, we meet on July 7th already. That's a scheduled meeting Monday night. I think what I heard from Commissioner Hutchins, we would like a pay scale showing what the 8% lands each county employee. Is that correct? Similar to what we had before. Is that correct?
That's what I would like to see.
And then we will look at that and see what level that brings our emergency services up to and then we can evaluate. Is that fair? There's no motions on the floor, that's our next steps. Is that, is that fair?
And the third dollar.
Yes, yeah, we can wrap that up into the pay category. Do we have, do we have specifics on how we want to have that dollar amount broken down or just, Chad, take the bucket of money and show us what it would look like in comparison?
8% would equal about 4,000, so that would be, if you're going to stick with the 8% number.
You just want to see it on a spreadsheet. Correct. And where that would land each employee. Any other items in debate on the budget?
Mr. Chairman, just, just to give you some ideas where we're at time-wise, since the budget did fail in commission, it's got us kind of start the process all over again. So in order for us to pass anything on our scheduled meeting on the 21st, it has to be published in the newspaper on the 11th, which means it has to be to the newspaper by noon on the 9th, Wednesday, the 9th. So we would need something out of this committee by next Monday night's meeting.
Or we, or the chairman can have a special call budget meeting later in the month.
You mean a county commission meeting?
A county commission, yeah, yeah, the chairman, me as the chairman can have a special call.
You, yes.
Full court if we can't come to consensus.
That's obviously your prerogative, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, are we saying we've got a consensus at $144 between the 11 of us?
I think it's, I think it's undecided.
Say, Commissioner McCorrigan. It's going to be, it's going to be terrible to work on all this and then here we go again. You know, if we can't, if you can't come out and state what you're going to support, you know, that's, that's irresponsible.
Will there be an additional public hearing?
Yes, sir. We would have to have a public hearing to exceed the certified tax rate anyways, so we can just roll those two together.
So is there coming for the $144? I guess we'll see what comes out of this committee Monday night. Any new business to come before the committee? Okay, we'll move to a public comment. If you'd like to address the budget committee, we ask you to come to the podium, state your name. Please keep these items relevant to the scope of work of the budget committee. You'll have three minutes.
I guess the chairman, everyone else, what I've heard so far is titles and egos. What we're concerned about is titles and egos, so here it is mine. My name is Matthew Christopher Newso, I'm a senior chief of the United States Navy, retired, and I'm part of the IAMA operator at this part of White County Volunteer Rescue Squad and blessed to be the captain of the Doyle Fire Department. I have a letter from one of our junior firefighters who is the future of White County and wants to explain the significance of the EMA director and their full-time position. This will offend some, but it's about our neighbors, it's not about that. On Monday, January 6th at approximately 12:49 PM, Cherry Creek, Bondicraft, and Eastland volunteer fire departments were notified of a residential structure fire on countryside road drive, sorry, countryside drive, with confirmed the trap. White County EMA director Matt McBride was the first responding unit. Approximately five minutes later, after incident had been dispatched, Director McBride stated that he had seen a smoke plume before arriving on scene. Director McBride requested a countywide page for manpower and an engine as no other units had yet responded. Upon arriving on scene, he confirmed that the resident was still inside the structure. Chief Sparks already aware of the incident responded promptly in engine one. Approximately 19 minutes after the original dispatch, Doyle Engine 1 was the first engine on arriving scene. By that time, the house was nearly fully engulfed in flames. Several other fire, several other volunteer firefighters from around the county responded in their personally owned vehicles. Crews began a defensive attack and were able to achieve a knockdown of the fire. Once it was deemed safe for firefighters to perform a secondary search, the deceased resident was found lying face-down in a hallway of home with a cat in her arms. Would the victim still be alive had an apparatus arrived more quickly? We will never know, but more prompt response would have undoubtedly given her a better chance. The reality is that all county fire departments in White County are 100% volunteer. These firefighters also have day jobs, just like each one of you. Therefore, no volunteer department within White County can guarantee a response 100% of the time. However, some departments are struggling substantially more than others. There are people within these departments who are not willing to admit that a problem exists for whatever reason. These individuals are withholding proper care from their citizens within the fire districts. I commend the departments that are being progressive in their actions. The type of response that occurred on January 6th is a disgrace to the citizens of White County. On Monday, June 30th at approximately 2:15 PM, Sparta Fire Department was dispatched to a residential structure fire with possible entrapment. At that time, Sparta Fire was already on emergency medical call. Despite this, they responded and shortly after, mutual aid was requested from South City. Sparta PD arrived on scene before any fire department personnel reported multiple burn victims, three of whom were juveniles. Fire Captain Wilson arrived to find the residential structure heavily involved in fire with no available ambulance, all units already on emergency calls, fire crews focused first on patient care. As more personnel arrived, fire tech operations were initiated. Doyle Fire Engine 1 and EMA Director Matt McBride arrived simultaneously and began an interior fire attack. The fire was brought under control. White County EMS did not have an available ambulance to respond promptly to the incident due to all the units being committed to other emergency medical calls. A Sparta police officer transported the juvenile burn victims to the hospital in the patrol car. The adult burn victims were cared for by fire personnel cross-trained in emergency medical until, until an ambulance arrived. Thankfully, EMS Director Kerr made the decision to staff an additional ambulance due to the high volume of emergency calls that day. This incident could serve as a direct representation of what emergency services in White County look like on any given day countywide. There are just a few cases that highlight the ongoing deficiencies in emergency services across the county. These tragedies weigh heavily on my heart and on the hearts of many others, but my heart aches not only for the victims, it aches for the firefighters who pulled a lifeless body from a home, for the bystanders on January 6th who attempted to arrest a woman as she screamed for her life, for the police officer who transported three juvenile burn victims in the backseat of his car just days ago, and for the entire community of White County. I pray these trends do not continue. There is a clear and present lack of service that will continually plague the residents of White County so long as they remain part of a community with such a blatant lack of support for the fire service and emergency services as a whole. Thank you for your time. That was written by a 19-year-old firefighter in White County, Caden Sparks. That is the future of White County. Give them the opportunity to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Dan Ellis, Cooper Street. Couple of questions, trying to find money to certainly provide these folks for the pay they deserve. Parks and Rec Director, first question, if that is funded, is that one of those jobs that has to continue to be funded forever, whatever you call that, I forgot my term on ESS?
Maintenance of effort.
It's a three-year contract. It's a three-year contract with a grant.
Has the grant been approved?
No, not officially. I was told today that either Representative Sherrill or Representative, Senator Bailey would notify us.
When you say a three-year contract, contract?
The grant is a three-year contract.
Okay, after that three years, what happens?
It would be up to the county commission at that point.
So it's possible ongoing deal?
Yes, it's possible, yes, possible. You know, hopefully that job does, does a good job and is needed.
I agree, but I know you said that position is funded quote-unquote by a grant and it's in the budget though, that that's outgoing money for us at 52,000? Why? We, we, in my opinion, we need an EMA director, a whole lot more than we need a Parks and Recreation Director at 52,000 a year. Because it's in the budget, just because there's a grant there, it's still part of this budget. It's still part of this budget. It's still part affecting the deficit or projected deficit. Why would we want to take away money from these folks and put it in a park and rec? I mean, I know that's nice and that's good, but we've got more needs than we need for a park and rec director. Yes, that's my opinion, okay? But you're looking for money and looking for ways that can be done. The other thing is the longevity path. I think that's a wonderful idea, but it is also can turn into an astronomical amount of money. And we talk about going, looking at the future. If you're going to have that, I think you behoove everyone to consider a cap on that somewhere. And words, you know, don't let it continue to escalate. Put a cap on it and or lower the amount that you're considering giving on that longevity pay. And give ourselves a time to look and see how much solid waste money we might be looking at that we could fund and do with these other areas. Don't jump it all down one year.
Ms. Ellis, I would say, I don't think you made one point that wasn't valid. The only thing I would say about the Parks and Rec Director, by resolution of the county commission, there's two pennies restricted in each year's budget for Parks and Rec funds. So according to next year's property value, that's about 194,000. That's less than a third, about a fourth of that money would be dedicated towards salary. So those funds don't necessarily affect the bottom line. We have two pennies restricted whether we use it on an employee or mowing the grass or fireworks.
And what does that two pennies represent in actual cash money?
About 194,000.
So that's going to end Parks and Rec's regardless?
Yes, ma'am. Unless the county commission, I believe to repeal a, I'm sorry. Yeah, unless the county commission decides to repeal that resolution, which is possible.
Which is a possibility of looking at funds.
Yes, ma'am. I think, do you want me to know off the top of his head? That resolution's been in place for quite a while.
But it's still something that could be changed if you need to debate. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
What happens after the three years when the grant is gone?
Well, that's what I asked him. They said the county will then have to make a decision to either continue to hire that person.
Well, they're going to continue. They're not going to fire somebody. So you're going to continue and that means you pick up the entire salary.
Yes. Am I right? I'm answering your question?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that was sort of my point too. Was that, you know, at the end of three years, you know, you're looking at, you know, it seems to me like a resolution too would be a good idea. I mean, that's just my opinion for looking for more money down the road too and giving ourselves a chance to look at what kind of waste management money will become in and looking at us to try to do something. Because either way you look at it, next year you're going to be looking at a budget again, but you may even have a better idea.
We don't want to talk about that right now.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
My name is Peter Tanish. I got one question and some observations. Was there a budget deficit last year?
Yes.
Five dollars.
How much?
500.
500, so okay, so you've actually decreased the budget deficit. And then I think the frustrating part for most people, it's not the salary of these guys. They do a tremendous job. I don't think anybody's going to ever argue that. You've reassessed the home values, which was basically a raise the tax. And then you're raising the, from $1.21 to $1.44. At one point it was 205. It's like there's no, for a layperson, it's like, where are these numbers coming from? Where they're going? Here are 15% raise, 8% raise, $4,000 raise. We're going to have continued budgets. We got an increase in spending on the new home building things. That means there's more homes being built this year. She said it was almost double from what it was last year. So we're getting more homes in here, which means they're getting work tax increased. But the one thing that I've seen that's going to give, that's giving you guys the problem. You're sitting there squabbling over amount of raise. You have no basis for that. You know, in private industry, we would be given a bucket of money a year, a million dollars. Okay, you're going to say 250,000 goes to your department, 500,000 a year department, 100,000 a year and use a department head that would divvy it up. You're not giving these guys performance based raises as far as I hear. You're not giving cola raises. As the gentleman who was the commissioner said, he's not going to run. He said, I can't live, I wouldn't want to live without knowing if I'm getting a raise or not. But he will be living that way because every retiree lives that way. You get a fixed basis as a social security and then you get a colon. Why don't you guys tie your raises to that colon? That's a federal mandate, if you will, or whatever word you want to use. But they're the ones that says, okay, it's 2.5% this year. They should live on 2.5% if I got to live on 2.5%. Understand their jobs are different. Understand they're more valuable than I am. But if you don't want to do that, then go to the performance base. Let the sheriff say, you know, this deputy here, he really outperformed this deputy. This guy gets 5%, this guy gets 2%. That shouldn't be your decision here, so 8%, 15%, 4,000. You know, it's, they're the department heads are the ones who understand the people. They know that people are working the value. It's your job to say, here's the amount of money. Now, the sheriff, he can divvy it up however he wants or the, you know, the fireman. You're wasting, I think, too much of time. You're getting stuck in the mud and you're just spitting and just throwing numbers and, you know, and I don't see you going to get anymore. There's like no plan further down the road for next year. Because like you said, you're just going to be doing your deficit next year again because you've got that 8% raise. And the commissioners are going to say, nah, we ain't going to do nothing. But if you came in and if you're, if the budget was allocated this year for the 8% raise, I don't know, it's $2 million or whatever. And you say, okay, we're going to have $2 million every year from here on out. You may have to increase that, but we're not going to sit here and say, oh, the mechanic's getting 8%. But the sheriff's guy is only getting 7%. You guys are in the mud too deep. You don't need to be there. You just need to say, here's a bucket of money. You know, let the department heads divvy it up to who they need. That's just my two cents.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, I think you just say some of the same things I've said here in the last.
I think you turned it off.
Say some of the things I've said in the last many meetings about Taylor, Brookley Drive. Because you seem like you're still insisting on giving all the county employees a raise at whatever. It's the same problem exists. We need to get our police. We need to get our EMA guys up on pay. That's what we have to do. But you're going to keep losing them until the next county over. It just never stops. Last, I'll say it, the last many meetings, I negotiated many contracts. You gave these county employees a 13% increase in pay in the last three years. Now you want to get an 8%. That's 21% increase in pay in four years. That's insane. I never ever in my life negotiated a contract where we got a 21% increase in pay in four years. Never ever happened. That's crazy.
Where were you negotiating contracts?
Oh, yes.
Is that a union, right?
Yes.
Is that?
Yes, it is. And these guys, you guys, what you've got to say is, these guys are EMA. Let's start with them. They're $5, $6 an hour less than they should be. You've got to look at public, the counties around them, if they're going to, say, okay, they're $5 an hour less than those guys. To keep them, we're going to have to bring our pay up to their. Say, right there, we go $5 an hour up on EMA. Sure. What are we losing our officers to in the next counties around? What are we losing our jail people that work in the jail to the next county over? I know that's happening all the time. You've got to say, how much money are those guys making? Bring those sheriff's deputies, those jail people up to their pay. Now, you've got a real number. Sheriff can tell you how many he's got. EMA guys can tell you how many they got. Now you've got a real number for what you've got to have just to keep those two important departments. Remember what Junior said? We had 800 new houses come in this county in the last four years. We had 300 new houses in the last year. 12 months, Junior added on 300 houses in 12 months. That's almost a house a day. If we don't have more and good police and EMA guys to handle those calls, just what's going on is going to increase drastically and be bad. It's going to get real bad. You've got to think of that first. I think if you keep your county employees, I know the county employees are not going to like it. I think if you keep them to 3% to 5% increase in general pay, that's a very reasonable pay.
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
So we just had a conversation. EMS, ambulance, EMS, EMA, whatever.
Yep.
Represents.
75%.
75% of the total.
Of the.
Of the total county employees that were funding. So if we give a 3% raise to non emergency and we give, I mean, they're needing $5 an hour. If we give them $5 an hour, then they're getting 20%. The other guys are getting 3% and the average is going to be 15.
That's what you're going to do.
But you've still complained that 15% is too high.
You said it was too high.
It's not too high for these guys. You've got to do whatever you've got to do to get EMS.
But you're talking, you're talking about.
You're talking about.
25% of the people not getting it. And I'm not arguing that that's wrong.
Because you've got to have.
But the dollars still have to come in if we give them the raise.
Because you've got to have EMA employees. You've got to have them.
We have to have county employees too.
Not all of them that we have. They're not as.
But you're missing my point.
I'm not.
You are.
The bottom man, the bottom man is not where the money is. These guys are where we're already putting the money.
Some of them. You're trying to even money. What you're saying, 8% across the board. That's not even going to get these guys close to where they need to be.
It's not.
It's not.
We said 8% across the board, but then.
Why don't you say 5% across the board? And exactly what they need in numbers to get them up to standard pay.
Well, I think.
That's easy to figure. I'm sure, I'm sure Mr. Parker back there can say exactly what you need to do there. 5% across the board county employees, but police and fire, if they're $5, $6 an hour lower than what they should be, what's that number? What's that number? Now you've got a number to work on of what you need in pennies.
But 5% or even 3% for 25% of employees and 15 or 20% for 75% of employees, it's still going to be a big number.
It's going to be a big number. And I really think, I really think you're, I'm surprised you're $1.44 because I think we're going to see $1.47, $1.49 to get to where you need to be. But that's still a whole lot better than $1.57 for you guys voting on it. But you're going to be hired. This is just a start. Think of what the next few years are going to bring to get this fired equipment and everything, all of that stuff up to par. You're talking about way more money than you're talking about now. It's going to go way.
Well, Mr. Tet, we're past the 30.
I just want to say, there's a way. You don't, you're just saying 8%, 11%, whatever. Figure 5% across the board if you want, whatever you want the raises to be for the county employees. But then on top of that, what's these guys and what's the police going to caution to get up to normal pay? Now you've got a number. You have a number that you can say, we need this many pennies to make that number.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Heather Blankenship. I've been a property owner and resident of White County for over 16 years. I do not envy your position. You are having to rob people to pay poll. I can tell you, this past year I went and visited family out of state. I have three children, long car ride. Stopped at a rest area, at a rest area, have all the little pamphlets. One of the pamphlets was for White County. One of the first things I noticed other than the beautiful waterfalls that we have was welcome to White County, one of the lowest property taxes in the state. Thank you for bringing anyone else here. So with that said, White County's population is running at an astronomical rate. We have and continue to have one of the lowest property taxes in the state. While most of us would say we really appreciate that, the issue for not raising that over time is why you are here now. That is why that White County Sheriff's Department, EMS and Fire are not even comparable to surrounding counties. As the informant said a minute ago, over the past several years, he says 21% is too high. Well, if they were being paid a fair wage compared to other surrounding counties, it wouldn't be too high because it would have been raised over time. I envy for now, $1.44 as the projected proposed rate. I think you all know in sincerity, that is not going to work. More than this county wants to pay more in an economy where we are all struggling. No. I am fortunate to be a stay at home mother while I homeschool three boys. My husband is not only at the sheriff's department as your lieutenant, but he is also serves new many titles. He is joining Cherry Creek Volunteer Fire Department because he's seen the need and he filled it. These people are the backbone of our community. And if I could, if they all were to lay down their badge today, hand you the keys to the ambulance and say, good luck, thank you, what would you do? You would be forced to hire all new people in order to get them here since they already have vacancies they cannot fill. You would have to pay them a comparable wage or you would not fill their spot. Again, I don't envy your position. I thank you today for being here. I thank you for your candor. But I implore you, please, see the value and need in these ladies and gentlemen that are right here. What they deal with daily, what they see, what they hear, it takes a mental toll. It takes a special person to do their job. So I thank you again. And I ask that when you do decide on your budget, whether it's $1.44, which truly doing is unrealistic, it needs to be higher, that you put these men and women needs above other things. Thank you for your time.
My husband and I, my name's Ellie Snyder. My husband and I retired down here in 2014. We lost our jobs up in Pennsylvania. My husband did research on the computer and Tennessee was a place to come. We moved to Cassville. We sold that house, moved to Bonner Mountain, and now we're in Cherry Creek. I worked for a war company for over two years, seen an awful lot of people. People are struggling. The medication is killing us. The groceries are killing us. I don't know how anybody does it with kids. But our assessment went up 130,000. There's no way on earth we could sell our house for that. I appealed it, they brought it down 30,000. There's no way on earth we would sell our house for that. Now, I guess the state rate is 1.21. I read a wonderful article, it was extremely transparent. And you were saying at 1.38, you're not going to be able to have any money fairly, making fair phones or whatever. I want to represent the people that are getting ready to lose their homes. They don't have money. This is like one of the worst times. I don't even know if it's 100,000 is my increase, even if it's 1.44. There's a lot of people, I've seen a lot of customers that are barely making it since COVID, from paycheck to paycheck. And I think any kind of an increase or any kind of a help would really make a difference. These guys, any EMS or anything, that's the only place we should be putting money. We had, we had the wheel tax in 2014. We had COVID. We had the COVID bonuses gone for the essential workers, which was 3,000 full time, 1,500 part time. And nobody at the hospitals, no doctors or anybody, got any of that essential money, which should have been put back in the pot if it wasn't going to be helped otherwise. I want to represent the everyday people that are struggling from paycheck to paycheck. And I do agree that we need to put all our emphasis here and not on regular employees. We need to take care of our people. They are hurting, they are struggling. From 2014 to today, I have seen White County go so far downhill as far as taking care of their people.
Hello. My name is Jonas Sahorn. I live over on Judah Drive. And I felt very cool to come out here tonight and make a statement as a homeowner in White County, but obviously also as a county employee and a mother. I don't want to see my. I don't wanna see my taxes increase, nobody does, but the fact of the matter is that the world has changed. I spend around two hundred and twenty dollars per week on food for my family of five. My check is approximately a thousand dollars every two weeks. My house payment is eight hundred dollars per month. Thankfully, I bought before the housing market went up. Now, I'm not gonna lie, my husband also works and makes about the same that I do at a warehouse. Many of my coworkers though are single parents that do not have any help. Rentals now are hard to find under a thousand dollars and daycare costs a hundred and fifty dollars per week per child. My take home pay for 2024 was approximately twenty-seven thousand. That's all. This, of course, is after taxes and insurance, but that net pay is more important than the gross pay. The federal poverty level in Tennessee is twenty-one thousand five hundred and ninety-seven dollars for a single person. If you add just one child, it increases to twenty-nine thousand one hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Any single parents working for the county are at poverty level. It's easy to look at a fifteen percent raise as too much or saying that you never got that where you worked. But how many of those jobs included carrying fifty pounds of heavy gear in a hundred-degree temperatures? How many of those jobs send you emails warning you that there is currently a gang threat that is going to take out law enforcement officials? How many of you have meetings in the morning that someone coming to court has threatened to bomb the building because he's not getting what he wants? Have you ever found a hidden shank or a tattoo machine during a routine cell search and been stabbed with the tip because the non-stick gloves don't cover your entire hand? Have you ever gotten stuck with a used hypodermic needle while attempting to perform CPR or give other life-saving help? Have you ever had to have monthly hepatitis checks after having a suspect spit in your mouth just because they don't wanna go to jail? Or how about being bitten so hard that the person bit you through your shirt and still drew blood and left a mark? Has your job that you never received a fifteen percent increase ever caused you to have a broken clavicle because in an attempt to detain a suspect, he kicked you so hard, it completely shattered the bone? I have personally been tested after someone sent methamphetamine in the mail in an attempt to get drugs to an inmate while I was six months pregnant. I have been assaulted by a six-foot-two inmate who was mad that there wasn't more broccoli on his dinner tray. I had to be tested for syphilis after being in very close contact with a three hundred and fifty-pound woman who mentally thought that we were trying to kill her. Yes, I understand that fifteen percent may seem like a large increase to some people. According to the U.S. Inflation Calendar or Calculator, one dollar in 2012 is now one dollar and forty cents, a percentage increase of forty percent. Our county is far behind in our income rates. In 2013 and 2014, we received a zero percent raise. In 2015, 16 and 17, we received a one point five percent increase. In 2018 and 2020, we also received zero percent. These numbers have put us behind inflation, which essentially causes us to lose money by staying employed here. All the county employees try our best to make ends meet. I know many, including myself, donate plasma and cook bill to get extra income to pay the bills. Most of our deputies also work private security in Nashville, in Smithville, to make their ends meet. My children are on Tim Care and my baby is on WIC. Those programs are for low-income families and I qualify easily. We have been speaking about a specific case involving a fire where there was not an ambulance available to transport three babies and their father to the hospital. We don't speak about this to use the family or to make it seem like we want personal gain from tragedy. We talk about this because this will be the future of our county if something is not changed. If we want the best, we have to pay them what they're worth or somebody else will.
Hello, Crystal Templeton, West Cam Road. So I have a couple of questions. Mr. Markham, maintenance of effort, is that, does that law only apply to pay and employment or does that apply to buildings and such?
It depends on the department. The maintenance of every law is different based on which department you're speaking of.
Okay, so that would be another, I need to come sit down and pick your brain meeting. Okay. Second question, average of Upper Cumberland that we looked at, can, can you tell me what counties that were, I think you're the one who said that we looked at the average of all of the Upper Cumberland.
I'm sorry, second topic for the pay studies. We did a, you did the surrounding counties and...
DeKalb, Warren, I think Cumberland was in it. Putnam was not.
City of Sparta.
City, in the city of Sparta, because that was a big complaint with the sheriff that the city of Sparta is making more than the county.
And I think Warren County.
In Warren, yeah, Warren. Warren, Cannon, Smith, Cumberland.
Okay, so Putnam was not included in that? Okay, great. And Mr. Cranford, what do you do? I'm, I'm not familiar with you. What is your profession?
I'm a firefighter.
Okay. For the city of Murfreesboro?
Yes.
What is the city of Murfreesboro's longevity?
It's sixty dollars a year.
Still sixty dollars a year? And they have a city size of...
Uh, well, several, several thousand people.
Okay. So...
It's about half a million people in the city.
I love your idea of looking at the pay scale. Also, do they still give COLAs if you're topped out?
No.
Do they, do they stipend at the end of the year if you're topped out already?
If you're topped out every year when they voted in, then you do get a, if they did vote a cost of living. Sometimes it's a step raise and sometimes it's just a cost of living. And sometimes it can be both.
So sometimes it's not gonna go towards your retirement, but then some years it will. Correct, okay. I am absolutely for figure out a way to give them their fifteen percent raise. Okay? Absolutely a hundred and twenty percent. I'm also for finding a way to put those deputies, those two, at least two, because I think he asked for four, back in. Because the difference between a deputy and an EMS training is you've got to know for sure, even if you said, hey, yeah, he can have two, he's not gonna be able to get trained at least until January, probably later, right? So you're not even gonna be taking that money out of the budget yet, but then hopefully we'll have some answers from waste management. Correct? So there's an idea there for you. The other thing is, is if you look at this pay, original pay scale that you guys did, most of the employees that are getting fifteen percent raises are the ones with boots on the ground. You remember several years ago when another city gave astronomical twenty to forty percent raises to their top and didn't give much to the boots on the ground?
That's right.
Look at what he was talking about. You pull that top down just a little bit, you've still gotta have a step in there. They've gotta have somewhere to go. But it doesn't have to be the moon right now. Those people, Mr. Markham, that are only gonna get one or two percent, we can give them a stipend or a COLA so that they can at least get a three percent to cover their insurance costs or maybe five percent. Guys, you can do this, you're just gonna have to work together and get rid of the egos. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Connie Davis. There's ways that we can come, sorry. There's ways that we can come up with money to where we can see that these people gets a reasonable raise. I think fifteen percent across the board is crazy. I think eight percent across the board is crazy. There is positions in this courthouse that I know for a fact are getting paid forty hours and they ain't working but thirty, thirty-five, thirty-seven and a half. That is ridiculous. We're supposed to offer them insurance, that doesn't say we have to pay for it. They're getting holiday pay, there's a lot of things, just like Danny Wayne needs a secretary to help Brooke. I have no problem with a secretary to help Brooke, but we've got people in this courthouse that don't do nothing for about five days a week. So those people need to be cross-trained in Danny Wayne's office to help Brooke. There's ways of coming up with some extra money. If we can't come up with what we need for certain people that's on the ground, like she's talking about, the essential people, not sitting with your feet up on a desk, not sitting in the office playing on your computer and your phone, that's not the people that needs these raises. It's people that's on the ground, that's trying to protect us. I am not for a property tax increase, period. Live within our budget, live within our means. Does God not say, He'll provide your needs, not rewards? Thank you.
Ms. Davis? Ms. Davis? Who, who is the person that you can guarantee that just works for forty hours a week at the courthouse here that can be relocated?
There's a bunch of them. Look at it.
Which ones? Which ones?
I'll tell you exactly which are the new minutes. Okay, we've got Brooke in the executive office works thirty-seven and a half. We've got a registered agent that works thirty-five. There's one, two, three of them. We've got county attorney that works just twenty hours. Um, let's see, county building person works twenty hours.
Connie?
How many more you want me to look at?
I'm saying which one, I was asking for the specific ones that don't work forty hours a week or getting...
I just, I just...
Hold on just a second.
This is your paper.
Hold on just a second. I'm not in favor of calling out any employees by name.
I didn't call out any.
I, I, I know, but it's easy to infer. If you guys wanna speak after the meeting, if you guys wanna get together and discuss, you guys need to do that. Is there anybody else like to address the, address the budget committee?
Good afternoon. John Meadows with the sheriff's office, been county employee for twenty years. We're here tonight because we got a hard decision to make. All y'all do, y'all have for years. The incident that we had the other day in the city of Sparta, you know, we can't prevent the incident, but the director of EMS has been asking for how many years for more trucks and more people? And I'll tell you upfront, seeing what I saw, those kids did not deserve to have to wait for help. That guy did not deserve to lay on that ground screaming for us to do things to him where he didn't have to feel the pain. You guys took an oath of office, whether it's gonna piss off taxpayers or not, y'all gonna have to make a hard decision. But a lot of y'all, other than the first responders, are not seeing what we see. When somebody's begging for you to take their life because they're hurting, when my prayer is asked repeatedly, give me more trucks, give me more people. Y'all use the term kicking the can, we've used it before. Here we are, still kicking the same can. It's time to pick up the can and do away with it. Now going back to what Connie was saying, everybody knows she's no-tax Connie. She don't want no taxes. But what she's not telling you is the twenty-six calls for service the sheriff office has had to respond to you wasted assets.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna wrap up public comment at this time. The, the next, the next budget committee meeting is scheduled for Ju-, Monday, July the seventh in this room. That happens after our steering committee meetings. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Child, before you adjourn, can I say something, please? Late last night, early this morning...
Ma'am, we have a motion and a, a motion and a second on the floor to adjourn. I'd have to have a, I'd have to have a committee member rescind.
But it's an update on the kids.
How about we do this? All in favor of adjourn? Say, uh, meeting is adjourned. Come on. Meeting's over and let's just listen to you. You don't have to be on the break room.
I don't need the mic. Last night, early this morning, a note of, who was a six-month-old, went in to do the first surgery for skin grafts. She ended up being burned over forty percent of her body. They told her mama that the next seventy-two hours are critical on how she's gonna behave. The two boys had burns, nothing real major. They have been released from Vanderbilt, thank you God. They are now in temporary housing with their mama. Andrew is off ventilator. He is still really, really drunk, but from updates from his brother who took leave in white in contact with a lot, he is doing a lot better. Just so our first responders know, what you did did not go unnoticed. This family, this community, this isn't about tax. This is about heart. Because we have people coming in from other counties donating diapers, donating food, donating any supply this family can need. So we gotta get over the, oh my God, fifteen percent. Because at the end of the day, the people in this room love this community enough to even when they're struggling, go above and beyond to help somebody that has less. And that is not something you can buy. That is something that's here. That is something that is here. This place is blessed beyond needs. That side of this courthouse proves that blessing. Thank you.